The hostess with the mostest.
Okay, oh.
We're now being recorded. Hopefully I don't lose the file wherever it goes. I don't know where it's saving it to right now.
Oh, well, that won't help me much if you can't find.
I will blame it on a computer glitch. Hey, if it works for the mayor of Seattle, I don't know.
I like to try to be better than the mayor of Seattle. Thank you very much.
Uh, where's Dale?
Uh, Dale will not be joining us this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Gallagher is going to try and run his first meeting.
Yeah.
Wow, into the fire.
Yeah, just just jump right in. So we are. We're underway with the recording, right?
We are.
So we've got the Bar Workshop Council for January eighteenth. Welcome, everybody. Looks like everybody is here. Except for Dale, of course, as you mentioned. It is a work meeting, which means that we welcome. Um, our citizens to watch in, but it is a work meeting, so we are not taking any comments at this time. They're all. That all happens in a, in the public weekly meeting. So, uh, first on our agenda is the minutes. Everybody get a chance to look. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, we can, I, for both, everybody look at both of them. We can move them on to, uh. Counsel. Anything else, Aaron? All right. Uh, we got our stormwater grant for fifty K. I don't know if anybody wants to make any comments about it. We've had these in the past. I don't know if we get one every year or not, but we've had them in the past.
Every two years.
Two years, okay.
It's the stormwater capacity grant. It's the money that we use, um. To like hire, uh. What are they called now? Used to be Inevac. Now I think they're Qualus or something like that to come out. And, uh, clean our catch basins for us.
Yeah, and, um, it looks like we've got quite a bit of versatility in the contract, except we can buy a factor, but we can't buy a pickup, so. Uh, we are limited to what we can do, but we do have some vers- uh, versatility. We've talked about a couple of different projects in the past. I think one of them was Deacon Pond was.
Yeah, that's a different grant. That's a, that's a different grant that'll, you know. And, um, it'll be coming to you here at some point as well. Uh, this was run by the attorneys. And they were fine with it like usual, so. It's, it's a standard.
Yeah, we've executed him in the past. Anybody that's new, have any questions about it or?
I, uh, if you don't mind, Mike, uh, I, I am new and it looks like this preceded me, uh, prior to, um, um, joining the council. There, there's page, I think it's page, um. Page, uh, seven of the document. Which I thought iterates what the grant is to cover. And if I read it, it seems very heavy on education. Uh, reporting outreach activities, stewardship activities. But nothing in the way of purchasing activities or it, it's from my, my point of view, not clear on what, what we really are obligated to do. Or what we can do with the funding awarded to us.
So what it, um, what it allows, like it allows the storm drain cleaning. But yes, they do want, you know, um. And we, we have. We have an agreement with. Uh, Snohomish Conservation District to do some of the education and outreach stuff for us. So they do some of that and we can charge it to the grant. But no, you, it, it will pay for us to buy like. Dog poop bags for the, um. Or, yeah, for in the parks. Um, but it, this particular grant is not. For going out and buying equipment or anything like that. It is for more. For the maintenance, the education and outreach. The stuff that helps us to, um, meet our NPDS. Uh, requirements each year. Oh, and NPDS is National. National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And it, it is a requirement. It's one of those unfunded mandates, but they give us this, this grant every other year. To help with that unfunded mandate to do all of this stuff.
Report, the reporting and the like, yeah. There is down on, uh, line eleven of page seven, Don. It does give us a little bit of, uh, equipment purchasing power if we need it.
Okay, okay. And this fifty thousand dollars is something that we, we use. And if, if we don't use it, it has to be returned to the state? Or is this something that we're, they're easily able to spend and then some?
We get reimbursed.
Right.
We do. Yeah, we get reimbursed. We don't, they, they haven't said, they don't send us. Um. The, the money first. We have to spend the money out of our coffers and then, um.
Solicit repayment.
Right, I, I send them our receipts and.
Send an invoice or whatever. Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
I'd be curious to see historical records of, of what we've done, just for my own education. Is that, is the Eagle system accessible to? The layperson or is that?
No, you guys don't get access to it at all. You, you'd have to come in and meet with one of us to get to look at that stuff.
Okay.
Because, and, and the way that Eagle works is so much of it is done in Eagle. And there's not, you know, it's not, it's not something. Where. Where I can go, oh, here's this electronic report because they, they don't have electronic reports come out of Eagle that we can pass on.
That'd be too easy.
Right. Yeah, and trust me, Eagle is a total pain in the rear. Um, it is not a fun thing to spend time in. Uh, I have my little notes. That, um. Our, our guy Kyle, he and I years ago sat. And, you know, he was at his computer and I was at mine and we were on the phone and I'm like, okay, now what? And I'm like, okay, hang on, I gotta write that down. And, you know, we, we went through it and now I can actually do it without Kyle having to walk me through it all the time.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Just one more follow up. The, um. The mapping systems that we, the mapping of the storm, storm systems that we did this past year, was that funded at all through this or is that funded through another coffer?
Uh, no, not through this. Um, and are you thinking about our? Our sewers that we did? Sewer can't be funded through stormwater at all.
Yeah.
I thought we were doing stormwater mapping too. That's what I was referring to.
Yeah. I, we, we did our stormwater, um. Where they go out and they do the inspections. And we're required to do that every year. And so there's a little bit of mapping, but that stuff already kind of exists in our stuff. They were just cleaning some of it up as they went this year and are all of our GIS stuff that we have. Um, is already paid for and so it doesn't go through this program. But this program did help to pay for some of it along the way.
Saw that in there and I wondered if it's connected. Thank you.
Yeah, when we didn't have any, it helped pay for some.
All right, anything else? So we'll move that forward. And then to, um, the next item, which is our, uh. Logo work or, um. Rebranding. Do you want to, uh, address that a little bit more?
Yeah, I can, I can touch on that. Go through that a little bit. Okay, so I just, um, as we come back around, I know everybody got, uh. Versions of this. Got it out, so everybody's had a chance to kind of look. That was based on, uh, some iterations that already gone through by the, uh. Call it the steering committee. So I just kind of walked through a couple of things. First, just how we got to where we are. A couple of things, get some feedback. And then there was, I think, I might have some other. Comments she might want to provide, but, um. Obviously, when we started this, uh, we had fairly limited budget, but the idea was that. If we could kind of come up with maybe, uh, a, a new logo and something that we could. Even maybe do variations off of, but really having this logo that would allow us to. Uh, go coincide with a new website that we know we need to do and we will be starting on. That would kind of give us a chance to get kind of maybe a fresh look, uh, and just kind of, you know, every time you see, I have a see a new website and. Uh, there's maybe a little just refresh, fresh of the logo and colors, things like that. That's always kind of, kind of pops out to people and all that, so. Start with kind of the idea of where, when I'll go with the logo idea. Obviously, our budget was limited, so we're not. Uh, Coca-Cola and spending, you know, a few million dollars on a branding exercise. That also means that, uh. You know, that we also keeping a team size to start with the steering, you know, we had, uh, three council members, Wing Dennis, Val and myself, and then. Uh, Paula and Dale also participated, but trying to keep that kind of focused. Yeah.
Excuse me, Martin, are you still on screen share?
Uh, yeah, is it not showing? I haven't moved anything yet, though. Are you not seeing? I still have it sitting on the, uh. Uh, all the, uh.
Stormwater.
Yeah, stormwater thing. I haven't moved it to anything yet.
Can we take that off?
Well, no, I can do that.
There we go.
There we go, yeah.
I mean, I'm not talking to the logos yet, so that's why I was just getting background, so I didn't want to distract anybody. Anyway.
Okay, I'm gonna distract you all here in a second. Uh, I wanted to try to, um, switch to my computer. Yeah, so give me, give me half a second. I hope I don't mess anything up.
We can relog. Yep.
Well, did, did you make Martin host?
I made Martin host, so I'm just telling it that I'm joining. I didn't.
Okay.
There's that kitty cat. Now, the question is, are you active, Paula's, uh? Hold on, I gotta, so I can see what's going on. Sure, I can see what's going on.
Hmm.
Uh, okay, I do not, so Paula, you should be.
It's offering for me to reclaim host again.
If you do that, will you lose the recording?
Yeah, probably.
Oh, then I'm gonna leave it with Martin.
I didn't have to admit you, but it looks like I did not have to admit you, so.
Uh, yeah.
It still knew you as the originator of this, so.
I'm, I'm just happy to not.
Well, well. We'll never know why she was happy. Power of technology.
She's still connected.
That's called zooming out.
A little zoom irony too, which is my favorite click.
So she's still there. Oh, wait, we got another connection happening.
And that kitty cat.
Oh, there she is.
Dang it. It's just gonna be one of those nights for me. Can we hurry and get through this?
We're close.
Okay. Back to where we were.
Okay.
Whoa. Don't kick her off again, Martin.
Yeah. Uh. Okay, so obviously with the idea that and the focus team that was giving us opportunity to kind of, you know, get through a lot of the, there was a survey, bunch of questions. Kind of dial in concepts. Uh, we got an initial set of. You know, logos and things. From there, we had actually, uh. Narrowed that down and that's when we had come to council, uh, and the ones that we did. We'll find out here, uh. Oh, never mind, I just, okay, uh, whoop, whoop. So too far, where were we? Um. Yeah, so we kind of had gotten in here, but the feedback obviously was, you aren't quite happy. When we brought this, we were trying to find another element, but the fencing, there were different options here. Council was a little bit, eh, not so sure about that. You know, we just didn't quite, uh, get there, so. Then the, what we got sent, right, were some variations to deal with taking out the fence. Right, or in, where, well, one, I think still has fence, but other options of the path, the kind of the concepts here. Of just a path and they gave us another example, as you folks probably seen, they kind of threw a hill on it to break it up a little bit. Uh, one with a fence, well, a couple with a fence, right? So those were the options and, um. That came through from there. Uh, there was also, uh, a couple of things I'll just add. This type of logo that we're going with would be what one would probably call an illustrative, illustrative, uh, diagram picture. It's things that you can do other theme, themes with. You can, uh, you know. Do other variations, whether you want to deal with colors, you can do themes. There's actually somebody, this is. Uh, gave me, uh, I got some examples. This is way fancier than anything obviously you're doing. It's, this is more. But you can see how the concepts here are saying, but they kind of morphed them through. So we're nothing this fancy, nothing like that, obviously. These aren't really logos. But the idea that taking something like we have here, again, whether we like text inside, outside. You know, what have you, and some of that are still options, but the idea that you can take some of it. Um, that way, um, and then also just one other thing and then I, well, actually I'm gonna stop there for a moment. I just. I was curious to first get kind of council thoughts of what this variation, uh. You know, some of these, what people thought of what they saw with this latest go around based on the conversation we had at workshop with, uh. Action.
You know, Martin, just, Martin, just to clarify, you, you said the word survey. So again, this, this, uh, this artwork that we're looking at. Has there been some survey of, of Briar residents that's led to this?
We, we didn't, we don't go there. What we did is we were asked, so first we did to kind of give, what are, there was a, a survey. Uh, that was provided by the, uh. The design firm that said, ask questions about, you know, what are the most important things about Briar? How do you identify yourself in Briar? So a lot of the things that you can imagine, citizens and people, we would talk about, uh, semi-rural feel. Uh, things like that all kind of came into that things. If you're interested, I can get you what the, what we sent back as the.
Okay.
Set of questions and that. So there was that survey to try to get a sense, uh, and handle on that. Uh, and then some of the things of, obviously, if you're, uh, looking from Briar Park and things like that, you know, we have some of the mountains. So mountains were something. Some of the other concepts that people that we've talked about. They were hard to convey, I guess I would say. And some of the things, um, I mean, not to spend much time here, because these were, but. These were just some of the original from our questions. They gave us a set of. Looks based on some of the input, other things that people liked and it said, and then this was the one that the sinking, this vein of this is where we kind of had. Settle on, and then that's where then what happened is we brought that, we got through a few iterations and this one is the one we brought to. Uh, council and had discussions on, uh. Back in our last meeting, was that November or whatever that. That was at the time. And so then this, but you know, these were quite hitting the mark for everybody, which I tended to be, uh, we were thinking, did we need another? Thing to kind of help establish as Briar, but, uh, you know, and everybody went to the, the horse arena and things like that, but, um. This still wasn't quite hitting, and so with that, uh, that we did at a workshop. Uh, with full council, then this is kind of then where we get these options that have come through, uh, that you have in your packet.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, our problem.
I too sense, um, I mean. There's something about the simplicity of the V two you have up right now that I do like. I want to get everybody's thoughts on that.
Me too.
As much as I like the fence too, I mean, I do like the fence, but there's something about that, I don't know, it just.
It looks weird in the pictures. Yeah, having the fence, just, it, it doesn't look natural. Without the fence, it does.
This might be me overthinking it, because I have a tendency to do that, but. Could we bring, maybe crop in that Briar logo and bring it a little closer to the artwork? It just feels like. It feels like it's pushed away a little bit.
So if I do this, uh, and something else I should also note is that, um. There are still funds here. What would be is if, you know, we don't have a lot to go through, yeah, more iterations. If we want to do more iterations, then we'll, but. But the, the rest of the budget would be then to be creating the exact format. There was some, I did have a conversation with them. This was also just to show if you end up black and white, but this was just one example, so this is not, uh, this. But how it might be used, uh, a little bit. So when you're talking about squishing, doing the font adjusting, certainly any of those types of things could be done. This was just an example that they did here. I don't know if I've been completely enamored with the different borders around. I know that, you know, there's the one version that had, I don't think it's in the latest ones we got. Um, it doesn't have the, you know, the inside here. I think everybody generally had steered, steered them away from that. But certainly, uh, John, to what you're talking about tweaks like that. Be a, could, could be done, uh, and all that. I, I, you were talking about this one, so.
I did a very unscientific survey of, uh, my family and a couple of my neighbors, uh, some of whom are already on a Briar Facebook page. And the, the number that came up more frequently than not, so of this survey, I had one, two, three, four. Five people preferring version number five. One piece, one person preferring version number two, which John has pointed out. And I was a split bolt. I was a split bolt between version two and version five. What I liked about version two is the fact that there's some houses in there to suggest urban development above. Beyond just the trees and the pastoral looks of Briar. What I didn't like about.
One with houses in it? I don't think.
I think V two.
It kind of looks like it has houses.
You mean the trees in the background?
I think V two.
Yeah.
Oh, that one right there. I don't know that that was, oh, you son of a gun, I never.
An intentional.
And, and I.
There's a house right there.
Yeah, it says a house silhouette added to the background to suggest the village, which I liked. What you've just identified is no one can really see it unless you know to look for it.
Oh, there's three.
Good eye, Don. I thought this was gonna be what color is the dress there?
No, but you know, this is scissored house silhouettes to add. I, you know what? All that, and I completely missed it, because I was focused on.
Like that.
So I think it would make sense then, you know, just the fact that it's been staring at us in the face and no one has seen it other than me, because I've read it. If the colors of the house maybe had a little offsetting color to differentiate from the background, that might be helpful, uh, to sort of. Bring out the, the contrast between housing and plant life. Uh, but again, I was thinking the same thing. If you could take that, that housing tree. Landscape and bury that in v- version five, that would be my personal preference, but so far the, uh, the sign, the scientists around me, the neighbors. Are, are, uh, in favor of the simplicity of.
Well, I don't know, based on who I saw was on our meeting. If I go to the Facebook page, there may be already screenshots up there and people weighing in. I know Sham is on the call, so that's what happened last time. We weren't even out of the call, Sham. I know he can't speak back, so.
I'm mad at myself now, because in the funny papers, I used to be really good at that, you know, what are the six things that are different in this picture?
Well, where's Will though?
Cause in the other, the other renderings, they're not. The silhouettes, correct, to the home.
Yeah, it doesn't, no, it's just that one that they, uh, did. If I zoom in here, it's just the one. Uh, and she put, but you could see there's more. More tree plant life, as Don called it, right? It's just kind of all the way across and then back, let me get back to page.
I'm with you. I like V five too, though.
But, so the thing is that I've noticed is both those between two and five, John, to your comment. That both are the more simplistic paths. I think the other one curves around, but it doesn't, um, just gives you a little bit of feel with that hill there, but, yeah. Do you now, yeah, go ahead. I'll let others keep chiming in.
It's just, uh, I like John's, I took a survey within the, uh, household as well and, and, um, I think there's general agreement on. Uh, V two, which John had noticed and also, uh, version four. Um, the, the path has a little bit more character to it with the, the curve. Uh, the, um, with the houses, one thing that I would note, because I noticed that as well, um, but trying to set those out. There is a, uh. Uh, probably a cost or complexity associated with the additional color necessary to set that off. Uh, or reproducing the logo for different uses, so, so keep that in mind. The, the other thing I noticed V four is that it was the only one in which the mountains shrunk a little bit. I don't know if that was purposeful or not, that I just noticed that.
Yeah, um, one of the things that from the comments, and I go back to the old, so let's look at here, just let me zoom at the prior one that we had. Uh, zoom that a little bit. So you can kind of see they were, you know, not necessarily as big. And I think some of the feedback that came from councils, we talked about it. Partly in this case that she tried to shrink some of the sky. I think there was, I seem to recall some comments about a lot of whites, well, blue space. Up here, uh, and did all that. And then I think you're right, that's the only one where she, she did. Kind of bring it down, uh, load the foreground made larger, so there's less sky in this case. So the comments over here kind of give you what she tried to do, but.
Yep. I, uh, did a, uh. Different sort of survey, didn't include the family. Maybe was it didn't include me, I'm not sure. But anyway, they, I put them up on the screen and left them on the screen all, all day and rotated through them. And towards the end of the day, I, I sat down and I just. Come through and I came up with two notions, neither of which were gonna be very. Popular, but it's kind of picking up on what Don was saying about the houses in there. It didn't seem to me at the end of the day like this. Style of logo or theme of logo really is what Briar is. And then the other thing that I noticed was that what the, after looking at them all day, what I wanted to do after. Seeing the path in the mountains is leave Briar and go to the mountains. Um, it, it came down to. It looked like maybe it should be a logo for Monroe or startup. Um. Is it, is it, are we happy that this is what Briar is or how we are conveying it? There aren't very many, except for the park and. When, uh, some of the few light, larger parcels are gone, there won't be much of that. Um. Are we, are we, is this where we want to be? I mean, I came away at the end of the day with a really different. Look at this and, and. Based on what's been said so far, it's, it's kind of an outlier and it really doesn't count for much, but I just want to raise that issue.
I know in our original discussions with the, with the small group of us with them, we were also trying to keep part. Not really our old logo, but something that. Had a little bit of the similar feel of our old logo. That's why the trees and the mountains. You know, kind of thing, because that's what our current logo.
Mm-hmm.
Has. Um. So that was, you know, because. When they asked us for an identifier of Briar. Unfortunately, all of us went, well, the horse arena. And, and then we all went the horse arena that has. Limited use now and that, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, we don't even know, you know, what the use of it will be, if any. Um, and so that was kind of why we had strayed away from that. In the beginning is because we didn't want it to be about the horses, because we were like, that's not really representative of us anymore. And then when they said, oh, what's your, you know, what's something that you're known for? We're like, our horse arena. Yeah, and, and then it came in and, you know, I. For me, you know, I, I look at the split rail fence and I go, eh.
Yeah.
If, you know.
Yeah, I think we talked, you're absolutely, you know, last time we talked about as a, as council worship, uh, the split rail and all, we have those in this kind of, but.
Right.
Yeah, to be honest, uh, I, I have to admit where I myself, and then again, Val, I want to give you a chance to. Uh, I've got your other stuff I can pull up, um, so no Val has something else she wants to share and some thoughts. Um, I tended to go towards this. I will freely admit and shame on me for not noticing the houses and reading the comments on the left. So bonus points for reading all the comments on the left, um. To Dot, but whether or not the houses show it there, it, it, it is a pretty subtle element, but at the same time. You know, uh, maybe that's part of the point, but I tended to be as John on this, that I, it just, it just seemed. Cleaner, little less busy. We've only got a few visual elements going there. Um, I think also the, the, what they did here, well, this one, they did pick the fence. But that was just randomly, they picked something, there was no guidance, uh, from me on that front, so. Uh, that was just something that they kicked over to say, hey, in case you guys are looking at that, because I did have a little bit of a conversation with them. On that. Uh, the other thing is again, these things can be, you know. For other things that, you know, like say music in the park or there are other activities, you know, there could be other. Variations of these that we might in the future want to do. You can do those as onesies off, but kind of what is the base, base thematic, uh, theme that we might want to. Have and such, so.
Um, just to, to piggyback on what Mike had said, in, in a previous workshop, I had made mention of. Kind of the idea of going into this more. Modernizing the, the logo to kind of match where we're going, but just to play devil's advocate, it's a, it's a tough balance, because we've got. You know, old Briar versus new Briar, not to separate the two. just to play devil's advocate, it's a it's a tough balance because we've got, you know, old Breyer versus new Breyer, not to separate the two, but you know, you're never going to make everyone happy, right? But I do hear what you're saying, Mike. I just wanted to kind of touch on that.
Yeah, I mean, I had some people kick me the original, if you look at our website and those say, well, you know, with the, the kind of the signpost that we have today and all that. You know, these, obviously, those are things that we've had for a good, long time on that front, so. Anyway, well, let me do this. Let me just think about if you get more comments. Val, you had, I can, let's see.
Just two comments on this image. In my family's survey, it was observed that it looks like a beer label and that it doesn't take much to change the word Breyer to beer.
Might be a good pass.
So and they elongated oval, the height of it, I think it's just a little too much. And I wonder if we brought that oval just a little bit squished it.
Too in the aspect ratio or just?
Maybe it would look less like a beer label. That was, well, because a lot of beer labels are beautiful, right? So I mean, there's, there's something there. So that was, that was the family's survey results on that one. I didn't hear you said, sorry, Mike.
That's that looks the outer periphery looks like a horse. That's about the right ratio for
Oh, I didn't even catch that. Oh, you're right. We are evoking horses and otherwise too. So there's that. And then looking at different ways that we could use this image in a simplified fashion, so we could do things like take the path out in other in other versions of it and write Breyer on the grass. We could isolate just the big tall tree. I mean, there's options. We can use this logo in a more simplified fashion in different instances. So it could be very flexible and it doesn't have to be as rich as the one that we're looking at now. And I think that that could be useful in other contexts when we're we're looking at how it might be utilized. Whether it's on the website or future signage or stationary business cards, whatever that image is going to show up on, it could be a variation of of different elements of it.
Yeah, I think that's to the point I was making about being that it's more of an illustrative type of picture, you can absolutely take the pieces of it. You don't have to keep all of it in places. Absolutely agree with that.
And then at the neighborhood survey was that it does evoke Eastern Washington. There is a strong feeling that it doesn't really feel like Breyer, similar to what Mike was saying, and that it felt as though it wasn't here, it was someone else's town. So and then Mike, it's interesting, your observation that the path is leading us away from home, which so, um, those are my thoughts on on this one. It's, I think we could certainly move forward with it, but I would like to see it squished and a little less beer labeling.
Right, did you want to talk to your other one stuff?
Briefly, just to show one of the other options we talked about, if you have it in music beach. Um, so this is an earlier iteration. You can see a little bit of sharp reaction on it. One of the earlier iterations we'd looked at was a simplified sort of pencil drawing, single line drawing. So originally, when we looked at this as a committee, it was rejected as being too busy. And we, and then working on it with a friend down the street who is a designer, she had mentioned if we remove the the scalloped edges, it simplifies it. So in the lower two images, the the scalloped edges are removed or colored in. Simplifying it to more of just a a basic rectangle with or without the split wood edges. So just throwing at you something that maybe isn't so Eastern Washington Monroe idea and
Are you talking bottom left? Because
Yeah.
I love it.
So just when we looked it over and thought about options, I did want to say, you know, we look back at one of the earlier ones and and thought maybe we've made a mistake in in moving past it. So I'm just throwing that one out there. And I know it's a complication of the conversation and I apologize for that.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, I think and it's always hard to how do you make it all fit right? I think where the mountains and some of this came from, right, is if you're at Breyer Park, some of the things that we had talked about, right, you can, you get white horse, you get well, maybe we see, I guess we can see Pilchuck and you get the three fingers, right? So that's kind of that in the distance. Yes, they are bigger than, but and maybe what you would see from here, but that's again, it's it's artistic interpretation versus, but that's where that kind of came up. One of the things in the feedback that we gave was a lot about trees. That was a pretty common comment for people, what do we think about in Breyer? I think maybe even we had some of that at the time. So that's why you see the tree also. A problem, people are pretty proud of the trees and such we had and all that. So that's just kind of how this evolved to where it was and was that we certainly, well, just and I went through it very quickly, but let's just that because it has the one Val talked about. We saw this one, this didn't, you know, because we also talked about people, right? But we did, I mean, some of the feedback we gave at the time was, we think about the views of the mountains, the things that we see trees. So that's how a lot of this came from feedback that we originally gave. Obviously, it is in this one, this didn't, we weren't thinking so great on this one, but it was also this community. So this was a a crack at a community. Here's the one that Val and the variation she was playing with. This was a little bit, and there was some feedback and one idea of liking this kind of I don't know, what'd you call this? Because it was false, the the font, that's this particular font, thank you, yeah. On that, so that was why this one came in and then this one kind of took more of that and I s- I think just based on the comments and things, and others can speak for, you know, Dennis. I can't remember Dennis, if you were in the one caller, no, but the the colors, some of this, the color schemes caught people's, I think, eye. You know, and just how they kind of came, it had a little bit more of that contemporary feel and look. And that's where this one, you certainly have between that and the one other one, Val was talking about this one. Whatever reasons, yeah, we did kind of go by this one. It didn't seem to, at the time, it didn't didn't resonate with people as much as that other did. And I think that's kind of how we got ourselves to this evolution. This was certainly, we said, oh, there needs to be one more thing that could be identifying, but you know, the horse, the thing, but it just, I think, and we also, there's a workshop, and it just, it got too busy for us.
Busy, yeah.
And so that's where then we kind of got to this last set that we've had on that front.
I I think the colors are going to show up better on the vehicles that this will eventually end up on, most of which are white.
Yeah, that is very true.
Yeah, and hon- honestly, I don't know that we would even need to put it on the vehicles. I mean, you know, like, I I definitely wouldn't put it on the cop cars just based on my years of having been here and how many times cop car logo stuff has been changed. That would be a waste of money. You could put it on public works vehicles because we primarily use well, I know some of them have been magnetic that they can go on and off. And so it's, you know, it it makes really easy, you know, and and you're not, you're not sending a vehicle out to have it painted and have, you know, all have something expensive put on it. They were, the logos were created and we put them on there ourselves.
Yeah, now the reason I brought this up, because something, it actually, I didn't think of it as a beer logo, I have to admit, though, but but I've always been, something about, this was something I just predicted, and we were chuckling because obviously, we have no, we're not planning any zoning. So if anybody who's busy screenshotting this right now, which they are doing, I believe me, I guess, Sham, I am watching. I mean, he's, he's man, he's screen grabbing like there's no tomorrow. So we are not planning on rezoning to a eight-story building. This, the aspect ratio, I, when I thought about like our signs and stuff, I have to admit that I was more of the thinking that this would be shaped in a way that an insidious Breyer fit in somehow, rather than this to the side. Now, that was just me and I didn't really think about it so far, and I'm not the graphics design person. But I had that aspect ratio. I'd always thought, I did feel that this felt a little too vertical to me, but I think that was a little bit to what Val said.
Kind of like you're looking through a keyhole.
Yeah, yeah. So again, that could be fairly, and that's why I just brought this up, because this is one where she did kind of tweak the, it really did tweak the aspect ratio a little bit and got rid of some of the oval on the ends, but anyway, so.
I love that tree that's up front in this one.
Right.
I'm I'm good with this one. If you guys want to go forward with it, I like it.
And you think there there'd be an expense of just changing the shading of the houses relative to, you know,
I would just check with the designers on that. I know when I've worked with some graphic designers before, that's something that has been noted if we're introducing new colors and and
The trick will be and, but I I will absolutely, I'm making note of it, Don, so I'm adding some feedback. I think that the, what I would say is, if you are doing C Y M K, right, so C and yellow, magenta, black, which is a four-color process, then those, you're already injecting those colors in your design. If you are trying to stick to a four-color print, then yes, you end up, and it just depends on the printing methodology and where things go. So it's, it's worthy of know what you're saying, Dave, there and I'll, I'll note it. I like, I kind of was liking the subtleness of the houses, though it's almost too subtle. So to Don, I think that's kind of what you're saying, Don, is
Yeah.
You like the idea of a slight shift, but I, you know, I don't know.
You could always put a whisk for the smoke coming out of one of the chimneys out.
Wait, that's not, doesn't sound very
Riding away from the lawn.
I kind of like that idea, Donna, of maybe identifying that we have houses here. What about if that tree, that line, that dark line was more houses and a few trees? Because like Val says, we got a real birdy tree up front.
Yeah, you know, make make it, instead of it being trees with houses subtle, houses with some trees, is that? That's not a bad, okay. I feel like I keep hearing Dennis in the background and not hearing his feedback.
Yeah, I'm I'm kind of on a fence here, you know, I mean, I I I want to read what Mike said and John kind of said and I kind of look at this like and I'm brought up to you guys before that we're gonna like move forward and not, it's like we're keeping a lot of what we already have and not taking this forward to the Breyer's future. I don't know if that's just me or what. I mean, a lot of people like nostalgic too. So I mean, I'm very nostalgic guy, you know? I'm in the old cars and old houses and, but I just, I right now, you know, John?
So let me probe that just for a moment, Dennis, because I just went, so, and and because Mike did, like you said, made a little bit of what in your mind? What do you think that's missing or what, where do you think it would shift, if you're thinking more towards the future? What is it that you would think?
I know, that Martin, that's what I'm, I have a hard time grasping. And I can't, I can't I can't pull out of my head now what it would look like. I was thinking something more modern, but then I don't know if everyone wants modern, you know, I think.
That's, that's the problem is trying to identify what a current or even future state looks like when you have people who are identifying the area is semi-rural and liking kind of the the natural part of Breyer, the nature part of Breyer, I should say.
Correct.
You know, and then then you think, well, Seattle is doing the same thing with their logo, look like blue tarps and graffiti on it.
More appropriate with the spade needle in the background.
Well, firstly, Dennis, you're a beautiful human. But secondly, I I'm with Dave and everyone. I mean, I think we're lacking a little bit of the enthusiasm one would expect to move forward with a complete rebrand, agreed?
Well, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I mean, like, that's the challenge here is so, you know, it's one of those things where we'd have to kind of, if we want to do something more, one will come with a few more bucks. But the thing is, is that, all right, we could, you know, people said, hey, we want to go pursue this type of thematic. It's a challenge to have, you know, all of us at the same time in, right? Because we all have our own takes and opinions and all that. And so it's, it's, these things are hard to dial in. I certainly don't want to force the situation, just make a decision, we doing this or not. But you know, I'll take a couple of these notes. Like I said, that the guidance and things that came around originally was what Dave just talked about, semi-rural feel. The pathway was the idea that we have our paths, we, you know, the ones around Breyer Park, we did. You do have the view of the mountains, which is trying to hearken. It's been noted that there are other, I don't remember if it was Snohomish or whatever, but Val was, you know, there's some, we know there are other cities with logos that are of a similar ilk on that front. And so then we had the trees and maybe here, I think, at least with what I heard from Dawn, the idea of getting a little bit more of the housing in there resonates a little bit more to Breyer the community than the distance. But if it's yeah, I mean, one could say, well, it'll grow on you, but I don't, that's not really the idea either. But I would be looking for if there were some very distinct things that people said, this isn't working for us. On that, I know we talked about the scallops of the clouds, and that might be adjusted a little bit, I think, but this is, you know, based on the feedback and the directions that were given, what we've all done, this is where they took it, I think. You know, we had chances along the way to adjust it. We didn't, other than fine tuning here and there. But if people say, no, we want to start over, then we or try to take another shot. And we got to be
And I don't know what direction we would go if we started over. I mean, I wish, I wish I had that answer for you.
Well, look, here's the other thing. We're not so far committed into this as well. We, you know, what we funded would take where we are, if we said this, maybe a couple of little tweaks we talked about, and then, you know, they would give us artwork for different options for now. This allows, as Val was kind of, you can vary this, we can come up with other things as we go along, and this could morph over time. And it wouldn't, you know, it doesn't have to be full on effort to be, okay, hey, the shift, and maybe as we get more insights and more we think about it. I personally think that this, even though it is, you know, for again, the amount of money we're spending and how much, you know, we're not spending, you know, months and months. A lot of deep dive on this. This and these color themes onto a new website, when, because we're going to put that out for bid too, right? We're going to put a proposal out, we'll get numerous people coming, but you know, some number of people returning bids. This is the idea is that they can work with this. I think the colors, as I've seen it, I think will actually really pop to people on a website and really could has the potential to create, you know, whomever, you know, when we look at different options, what people propose for the websites. I think this would work well from the coloring.
And such, that's just Will you show that color screen with all the different?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's a nice
Yeah, let me do that.
Combination too.
Uh, was it on this one or is it the prior? I think it's the prior.
I think it's in two.
Yeah, it's one of these there. And I know, Val, there were some comments about there might be some tweaks on a couple of these. Those are easy enough to, yeah, those are easy to do.
For all the departments, just for the record.
Right, right down here, you can see how these could be then adjusted for the different departments.
No, we don't want
Orange.
We do not want that. We don't want different colors for everyone. We don't, we don't need them.
Well, I hear Paula, but I'm just going to say that if the council, so, you know, we're not going to jump to that, but it is something that can be done. You could do it on the websites, for example. So when you get to the websites and you go to different sections of the website, the different colors could be applied thematically there, things like that. Is another place that can be done, doesn't this, I mean, it's, we're going through and painting everybody's office door. Not that big a department, but city.
About what you were saying, this is a time of transition for Breyer, and I think that that's why we're struggling to find an image that that resonates with both the past and the future and the current day. And I think as we work through this transition, we might find ourselves in a place in five or 10 years where it's clearer and and that'll be really neat to watch that happen and to be a part of that transition and finding our new identity. But the one thing that really sounded out for me from all this work is we don't have an emblematic anything in Breyer. Except the horse ring. And so one thing I'll be thinking about that we can talk another time is Except the horse ring. And so one thing I'll be thinking about that we can talk another time is, is what could we do as a community to create? Something that is emblematic that people identify with, that creates that sense of connection and community that we can point to. When people ask us, what's something that says Briar to you?
That's us, yes.
Other than don't speed in Briar, which.
Large lot sizes.
Yes, that's what I hear.
Lots of trees and the parks.
I just have full disclosure that inspired by parks logos just kind of stuck in my noggin. I just think it's kind of cool. Would any thoughts on that one? I know we've already moved past it, but.
Apparently, which one, which one was that, John?
The one that was inspired by parks. You said that you guys kind of had voted against it.
Wrong one, sorry.
That bottom, that bottom left one right there, I just think, go back.
Oh, that one.
I just think it's super cool. Is it just me? Maybe different, different borders on the outside, but I like the. Kind of contemporary artwork inside. I think it's modern and cool.
Yeah, now that I've seen it, I, I'm also impressed by it. I don't know if the color is. But I, I like the, I like the simplicity, the, the. The shape, the geometry. And, yeah, and, and the font, I do, I do like them.
It's got the cool mid-century lines in it. I think it's just cool. I like it. It may be a different border on the outside, but I think the font is cool. Yeah, I think it's very cool.
Yeah, I, I admit, I was not a fan of the font. I just. I thought it was a little too. Too back to some of the other that we had, that was my personal, that was just my personal opinion.
I, I believe my comment when we saw it was, if we're going to stick with something that looks like this, let's, we should have saved ourselves the money and just stick with our old one.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's, it is, let's see if I can find it.
I think it's a combination, because it does.
Yeah, I think it's a modernized version of the old logo. That's what I view it as.
So, sorry for muddying this conversation by bringing this one up again, but.
Well, like, if, if we want to go down these paths, I, I. Will be voting on some additional money. I have to find out how much more, I don't think it's crazy, it's not going to be the same amount again, because. The other part of the monies was to deal with the actual creating all the.
My thought on this one is. I, I don't mind it, but I think it's more appropriate for, you know, like Wyoming or something like, it's not, it's not Briar. No, the, the other ones are Briar, they're more Briar to me.
Now, was that complimentary toward Wyoming or?
Yeah, I like Wyoming. Actually, I like, I, I like Montana, Wyoming area, all that.
Go, it looked like Tatooine to me, and I'm not trying to get bash Wyoming, but I think they filmed Star Wars in Wyoming.
That was, that was Close Encounters, John.
That was south, oh yeah, I'm sorry, Wyoming, yeah.
Devil's Tower.
Mr. Gallagher, you're running this meeting, you need to rate it.
Yeah, I, I kind of like Martin. I kind of like Martin's idea of, of work and process and some way to keep it in front of us. So that we're revisiting it fairly constantly or consistently, either individually or as a group, so that we can. We can either accept or decide on one of the ones that's presented, which are not, they're all really pretty nice. And, or modify or, or work to a different one, so. As long as nobody objects, I think we can, we can keep it alive, not table it, but keep it alive, but not make it. A hard decision at this time.
Well, what does that? Don't do anything or?
Keep it in an active status, but not decide on a, doesn't sound like we're ready to form a consensus.
Okay, so here's the, we contracted with the, that's what they, we either say. We're not doing anything. Complete the contract as it is right now. Don't have to go look at the S and W, see if we owe the other part. Go for some additional variations that we then would need to get a quote for what that would take for best guess. Or we take what we have, finish out the contract as is, but we can't just leave it open indefinitely with the company. We gotta say. What direction do we want to go here and make a decision to either close out that contract? As finishing with, with logos that we have, say, yep, going this way. Now we want to go back and do a little bit more, what's that going to cost us? Or we say, we're not doing anything at this point, we're stopping and we'll just. Sit where we are.
Is there the way, a way to get any numbers?
Well, yeah, I mean, if. I think what I would ask is if there's enough council members who really want, if they want to go back down another path like this one that's on the screen. I'm not personally thinking to go that way, but. If there's enough council members who want to do that, then. I can go back and say, well, people would like to see a set of options based on this. And ask what that would cost to come up with some additional, you know, if there's any feedback people want to give on that guidance. They put a little bit more together that and then. If people selected that's where they wanted to go or go back to the other one, and then we'd finish it out. That would be, if you want to get to actually driving a, if we're not comfortable, there are not enough people comfortable to one. Where we were going with the other and want to go back. So that's the, I guess that's kind of what we would need to do. So I can get a quote on it. You know, I don't know, actually, out of the 5K, I'm not sure how much of this was for this part. I would guess 60% of it, that's just my guess. 60% was getting us to this point, maybe even a little bit farther, knowing how many iterations that they had designed into the plan. So it might even be. 70% because the rest of the artwork can kind of flow out from there.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see us have just a little bit of a quantification of what's ahead of us. Either where we are and or, if we could experiment a little bit more, is it possible to get some options, couple, three options?
From the ones that we already have, we could, and then I think. For me, the deciding factor would be a price point. It would be, we can move forward with option A. No price change, we can relook at two other options or one other option with, with the additional cost of X. And then having those, that data, I think I would be prepared to, to make a decision between the two. Because I do think that this one would be just fine, squished. But it would be just fine, and I think that we could move forward, we could do some web design work to update our website. And then, you know, down the road, if, if it's just not resonating with residents, it was not a hugely expensive endeavor to do this work. Design wise, so we tweak it. Or we throw it in the bin and start over.
I mean, I guess my, I guess, if this is something that we see ourselves varying from there and. You know, to, I think Val and others, the point. It does, I mean, this is the very thing that we struggled with, right? What are the things to make that identity? And it's, it's tough for what we are is. The type of community we have and what were those identities? If people say, uh, sorry, go back to here, if, if. The squishing and doing adjust, I can check on that, might even be able to get some of that, that wouldn't really cost anything. I don't know for sure, but. But this, if, if you want to see some more theming of this, then yeah, I need to get a quote. And I would probably, I would, it would help if I had some very specifics, but again, I would think I would say is. You know. Do we have a majority of council that wants to go back and? Look at getting a quote to what it would take, and then obviously giving them some idea of what we want to see for change. But if we figured this would have to go through, based on the other ones, we went through at least two revisions past this, so figure there's probably two iterations on this. Um, that's probably what I would say to them, or they, it's probably what they would tell me, based on how we did the other.
And also remember, everybody, you're not ever going to make everybody happy. So at some, at some point, you have to, you know. Fish or cut bait and, and just go with something, because you're not, you're not going to make everybody happy.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's why this was given to a, a committee to come back with a recommendation, which happened. And, and I want to respect that process good, because like you said, you aren't, you aren't going to achieve total concurrence on, on everything. The other thing I keep in mind is that the, the really important part of this exercise. Is the update of the webpage, which is a disaster, and I'd like not to put that off for as long as possible.
Well said, David.
And, and just so you know, that's going to be a lot more money than this rebrand.
Well, can we get some numbers? I'm still doing it. I, I think I'm hearing Martin say that we can get a couple of numbers and then.
I, I can get some, I can get some numbers from folks. I think the other, what I'm not quite, I will say right now, I. We'd have to figure out, I guess, how coloring would work, because ultimately, when you go to the website, it's probably not our thematic colors we'd want on a. Website. So, again, this one was very monochromatic as it stands right now, but let me, I can get a quote, find out. But I guess I would also, let me just come back, I mean, do we have a majority of council members that want to go back? And do this, I, you know, and revisit, because we did not bring this one forward at the time. I realize that Val would like to bring it back. But just from this conversation and where we got to, do we have a majority of council members who? Feel it's worth spending some money to go back? Look at this, I can get a quote, but again, I'm going to guess, I'll just put it out there, we're probably going to get a, you know, $3,000, $3,500. That's just Martin's guess, this is what they would tell us to go help build this out, maybe it'd be 3K, because we've already got a first cut already done.
Let me just add one thing. I mean, when was the last time we rebranded with the current logo that we have now?
It's the, I still have the actual hard, it's on wood and then the metal is attached to the wood.
My point, point being, the likelihood that we're going to go through and use our bandwidth to rebrand the next three to five years is slim to none. So I think it's, it's great with, with great responsibility. That we satisfy our constituency with something that, that we feel really good about, and I'm not suggesting that we overthink it or. Blow through our budget, but I think it, as silly and, and small as it may sound, I think it is pretty important.
So I think that we're, we're sawing, sawdust here, if we can get a couple of numbers. Like Val suggested to, to give us a way to look at it somewhat objectively and say, are we willing to spend three, five, 10? Thousand or whatever it might be to go revisit the whole thing, are we going to be?
We should not revisit the whole thing, we can, if you want to take.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we need some number to quantify it, so we can make a decision whether to do anything different that we've got so far, which. We have a lot of good suggestions and we could certainly make one of them work, I think. But I think I hear enough that I would suggest that we, we get a couple of numbers to decide.
And I'll get the numbers. I will just say, I am. This is the challenge when we have a big group. And I have disappointed here a little bit in a sense that, and we'll go back and I'll get it. But that the steering team came through to some, and then we, you know, we, we're, we're backing up, but. I will go get the quotes, because I said that's what I would do. We'll get to the numbers, then I can have that for city council for next week, probably let people. Be aware of that and we can get it in the packet to just what it would be, but if we're going to, if people desire. To go beyond this, then. Probably who's running this operation, this one, we need to rethink, because I, I just think we're going to be very careful or we'll just spin ourselves to. Never getting to a solution. On that, so those are just some caveats I'll put there, but I can go get a, I'll get at least a quote, we're not actually saying to do it, but. You know, that's. Again, probably, I mean, look, if you just took it at face value and said, fine, it's five grand again. Do people want to spend five grand again, three to $5,000 and go look at another option on this theme? If people are saying we want to start over. The problem is, and as the design teams and any person tell you, if we all try to keep designing this and say, look, we're all going as a group, so we're not going to get to a. Final resolution, we're going to have at some point find compromise in here, so.
Your, your points well made, Martin, but we gotta, we gotta move forward and, and get a couple of numbers and decide if we want to. Spend any more money, because we have no idea, our, our point is, we don't know what that would look like, so. But I think your point is that we do need to move forward and, and make, make a decision, we just don't have. It doesn't sound like we have quite enough agreement to make something hard and fast. So let's look at those numbers, council meeting and.
Like I said, I think you're going to be, you'll look at somewhere probably between three and five. Keep that in mind and then we'll. We'll just see where that goes, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks for everybody's hard work on that too. Anybody have anything they want to bring up to work on tonight? Besides what we already did.
Just a quick question headed in the direction of the website redo. I'm wondering, I've started doing a little bit of scoping and looking at. Who has built the other city websites that are in our area and the ones that I like that are. Simple and good looking, and there's a couple of things that I'm aware we're going to need in order to move forward with that, and one thing would be. Decent photographs of areas of Briar, and another would be. The color scheme, we would need to decide those two pieces, and then. Mapping what we want on those webpages is of course part of the whole process. So some of these things, I think we could start. Getting our heads around and moving forward on that, we don't have to wait to have this logo identified in order to start preparing. For the website redo, so I just wanted to put that out there and have people thinking about that, and then Paula, maybe you can guide us. As the time approaches to figure out what, how we put out the RFP and, and then what kind of information we're going to need. In preparation prior to that.
I've gathered a couple of. Contracts and RFPs from different cities. So that we can come up with something to put.
Yeah, there's some foundational requirements, it's, it's about the requirements we need, and capabilities, staff, updates, things like that. I hear all that, what I would say is, we should not let this linger.
No, no, I agree. I think having a deadline in mind for what, when we're going to have this done would be helpful.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And I think your idea is a good one to start looking, and I think we can all look at other websites. Because what we, what we're doing with the logo is, we just didn't have a good idea of what we wanted ahead of time. And get a little jump on that for the.
So, so we should, I'll, I'll just give a look up, we, so you can look at sub sites, that'll absolutely be something we can do, it can be way in. When we put it out for bid, generally speaking, the best thing to do is identify a set of, it's a core set of requirements that we're looking for. That we need to be able to have our codification, make sure that's able to be produced. Ability to easily find FAQs, we had FAQ sections, those can be updated by staff. So it's a set of things like that, that you generally want to get into the requirements, and then as people bring in how they're bidding on the thing. You're going to see different ideas and things that happen, and there will be some cycles also, you know, once we select somebody, so when people make their, put their bids in. Then you'll be able to see some of that, but what we want to be a little bit careful about is saying, that piece on a website and make that a requirement. Now, if it's a requirement, a functional capability. Totally good, awesome. Getting into look and feel on a website, into the requirements respect is, that's, that gets pretty tricky to do and. You can end up bounding the problem in a way that you don't want to do it for seeing what kind of creativity comes back from folks, but absolutely, if you see a functionality. That we should have and you'd like in a search capability, you know, things like that are all things that we're going to want to be able to have. I mean, honestly, today are, you can't really search with beans on anything, so, just some things to think about on that.
And there are a bunch of companies out there that are specific to just. Primarily government websites and, you know, to make them function properly for government. You know, I've had, I've had. I've had one company in particular that keeps coming up with all the other clerks. That keeps popping out there, and I'm like, oh, well, good. And then they've also told me some of the functionality that it has, and I'm like, oh, that's a neat feature, so.
Those are what we want to capture, without a doubt.
There's some good stuff out there. I'll send you what I've.
Yeah, so start putting those lists together, because things that you saw function feature wise, that definitely want to have that, that will be huge. And to Val's point, there is no reason why we can't start collecting that information.
Because who, I got to tell you, there isn't a single city website out there as old as ours, as I was looking through, so I think it's time.
Grease was built with a stone and chisel.
An awl, wasn't it?
Well, that's high tech. It was steel. It wasn't stone.
Okay, anything else to point out? Well, I guess we're done for the evening, you know?
Good.
Any follow up for the recording?
Oh, that's right. Oh, thanks for mine. I got to stop the recording.
Yeah, you.
Oh, this whole time it hasn't been recorded.
No, I see the little red light up there. If it if I haven't seen the red light, I would I would have said something.
All right, now, if I hit stop, is it going to ask me where to save it? Is that what it's going to do?
Yeah, probably.
It's not too hard to find them.
Or or it's just going to tell.